Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Reverend Dr. Floyd D. Harris Jr. I am a civil rights leader here on the west coast as well as the United States of America. I'm also the senior pastor of the Free AMI Ministry Year right here on the Golden West Side. We want to thank everyone, our panelists here today for coming here to be with me. We thank all of you who are on the livestream today, this evening, taking your Saturday evening to be with us. I know you probably could be doing something better, but we have a very strong situation that's going on here in Fresno, California. Another black cloud, black eye of our city and our public education system again. We have the mom and Frank here with us today. She'll be speaking briefly about how she feels and what the justice that she wants to see as well, as well as her family that is with us here today. Here in Fresno, California, we have a school district called Fresno Unified School District. Fresno Unified School District had a situation here on June 7th by a principal by the name of Brian Boheart. This bully principal, as I would say, assaulted and attacked one of our African-American students here in our school system. I'm going to say that again. Mr. Bully Brian Boheart attacked and assaulted one of our own beloved African-American student here in Fresno Unified. I'm kind of going to give a little synopsis of what happened leading up to this. There was a video, I believe they were in the cafeteria, and the young man, and I don't know if he knew he was being recorded or not, thank God he was, being recorded during this incident on June 7th. Mr. Brian, who was the VP, no, not VP, he was the principal of the school. He was the principal of Walters Elementary here in Fresno, California. A credential to be a principal, you have to be credentialed. You have to go through a lot of schooling, testing, psych evaluations, and different things like that in order to be a principal. A principal, for those who may not know, is the top person of a school, he or she. I'm just going to say he or she, but now we're talking about a he. He is the top person responsible of a campus to make sure that kids are being in an environment where it's not hostile, violent, or etc. Principals over all, the counselors, over all the teachers, and they all report to Mr. Brian Boheart. June 7th, the surveillance camera caught Mr. Brian pushing our African-American, I'm not going to say his name because he's under the age of 18, so that's why you keep hearing me say African-American. Young man, very hard. To me, the push wasn't assault, the push wasn't attack, the push was intimidation. The push was something that was very uncalled for. You can go to my Facebook, you can see the actual incident that happened. Now, this situation since June 7th has went viral, it has went national. When I did my research, I found out that CNN has reported on this situation. I did my research, I found that the New York Post had did a story. I find out that I believe it was Channel 24, if I'm right, Mom, or Channel 30. Channel 30 did an episode, an interview, the mom on the situation that occurred. And we thank them for that, because there's not, that I, my research, there's not really any other news channel that's carrying this story. But I find it very ironic that there's more news reports from the east coast, from the south, talking about this situation than our own media here in Fresno, and that brings up a concern to me as well. Since then, what I'm told that Mr. Brian, who, the principal of Walters Elementary, this incident took place, and somehow or another, it was reported to the Fresno Police Department, which it was supposed to be. And it sat on someone's desk, the situation, the case, for at least two months, that I'm told. That's very interesting, how a child that's supposed to be protected in a school system that I pay taxes for. Not that I'm just a civil rights leader, not that I'm a father, not that I'm a grandfather, not that I'm a pastor of a church, but I'm also a taxpayer in the city. And I expect things to be done correctly, on point, without any mishaps. But it seems to be today that we have a lot of mishaps right now. Moving forward, this case sat on the desk for two months with our African-American young man being pushed. I'm told that the mom had to, you know, things have statutes of limitations, you know. If you don't do nothing, you know, they just shred it, or you know. So mom had to go back and reopen the case later than that, you know. So, pedal work was field signed, and it was reopened. So then the police department did an investigation, from my investigation of this case. And the police department did an investigation on the violent attack on our African-American young man. And then all of a sudden, Mr. Brian Boheart resigns from Fresno Unified. Just out of the blue. But why would he resign from Fresno Unified if he hasn't did anything wrong? Why would he resign? Why would you resign, Brian, if you haven't done anything right? I hope you really look at this, Mr. Brian, because you're going to get to know me very quickly, very quickly. Because you have to understand that when you put your paws on our children unjustly, and when you validate a black woman unjustly, there's something called consequences from the community. And so that's what you're going to get ready to find out, who I am and how I can mobilize, not Fresno, but the whole nation. Mr. Brian then resigned from Fresno Unified as the principal, and then all of a sudden, he goes and applies for Tranquility School District for my investigation. After you have assaulted and traumatized our young brother, and the mother, and the black community. So I want you to understand that you're not just dealing with the young man, you're not just dealing with the mom and the family. Now you have to deal with the community, and that's me and my followers out here, openly been across the world. What's interesting is, is that once Mr. Brian Boheart had resigned from Fresno Unified, he then went and applied for Tranquility, Tranquility, I believe he was hired as a VP, I believe. And now he's working again, he's making money all of a sudden now. And then CNN, from my investigation of the reports that I've read online, asked the superintendent of the school, "Did you know that he did this act at Fresno Unified?" And the superintendent says, "No, we did not know that he did this act at Fresno Unified." But since now we know, and we see the video, we're going to go ahead and put him on administrative leave. So now, he gets, he gets a pat on the back for what he did to our brother, instead of being held accountable by the system. And so now he gets to sit home with his feet back, having coke and smile, maybe going to the lake, or to the park, or, you know, maybe going to the coast, but he's still getting paid. He should have been fired, Tranquility should have fired him right on the spot, period. Now, when you look at Fresno Unified School District, vision, mission, the goals of children, when you look at the state of California, the vision and the mission, you can pick it apart to see, how can you sit here and work for two school districts? I mean, how cool would you resigning from Fresno Unified? I think you did, I think you was honorable to do that. But you dishonorable by going and applying for another school district to harm more children. And so we're going to deal with this situation, not just marching and holding signs up, we may do that. But this is a policy issue now. So we have the court case situation, and now we have the policy situation that we have to deal with Sacramento now, because they're the one that gave Mr. Brian Boheart his credentials as a principal. If they did or didn't, we do not want his dirty feet on any school district in the state of California or in this country. Because you deserve no honor. You have dishonored our community, you have dishonored the trust of the African-American community. Now, if you want to go and drive milk trucks, or whatever you want to do, that's your thing. But you would not work on a school district nowhere in the state of California. And I hope you're listening, Mr. Brian, because you should do the right thing at Tranquility and resign there too. If you resign in Fresno, you need to resign at Tranquility. Don't waste our time having to come to Tranquility and deal with the superintendent, and deal with the board, and deal with the state of California, because that's what's getting ready to happen next. Now, I just gave you an overview to the community, that we're going to need your support. And you all know how I roll, we're going to need your support. Because what has happened to this family could have happened to your child, could have happened to your grandchild, could have happened to your nephew, and we don't want that. We want respectable teachers, respectable administrators, and if they're not that, they have no honor in our school system. Now, I want to give the mic to the mom, I'm going to let her come from her heart, because you all know that I give a platform for people to speak. Because as I said, Fresno has swept us under the rug, and nobody's talking about it. But CNN, New York Post, and all that, no, we have to talk about it here in Fresno. And we're going to let our little young man and his family know that they have our support.
I'm saying Frank, and I just want justice for my son. I just want everybody to know that, you know, we have to pay attention to our children. Sometimes we tell our children to go away, or we don't want to listen to them, but we have to listen to our children, because sometimes they're letting us know that they're in danger. And just like this happened to my child, this could have happened to anybody's child, and I don't wish this on nobody. Parents, just support, and know that what I'm feeling and what I'm going through as a parent of this bully man at school who was supposed to protect my son, pushed him violently down with his hand. And that was a push, a hard push, that was a push to let me know I'm angry. I didn't appreciate that at all, and I want justice for my son. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Solomon, and I am the auntie of, obviously, my nephew. I'm just feeling so much frustration having young sons as well, African-American, and it was just so uncalled for. It was just so disgusting, the behavior of an adult who is here to serve and protect our children. It's hard to send my children to school knowing that, who could they run to, who could they trust? He definitely should be held accountable for his actions at the highest extent. How would you feel if it was your son, and the roles were reversed? You are supposed to be held at a high standard as a principal. And I'm sure you're a father, so it just, it's ridiculous. So many emotions, so many sleepless nights for my nephew, wondering why, why does this happen to him? You don't deserve to be a principal. You don't deserve to walk around and have these credentials that you fall short of clearly. And we're just rooting for justice at the highest level. Hopefully, this does not go swept under the rug. And just, we just want justice for my nephew.
Hi, my name is Fontella, and I'm the grandmother. And at this point, I am highly pissed off, I'm very pissed off. That was a grown man that put his hand on my grandchild. And how would he feel if it was his child that another man pushed on the ground? I feel that he should not be in jail under a misdemeanor, he should have a felony. Because my grandson is underage, he's not a grown man, and the way that he pushed him down was, to me, as if he wanted to fight him, as if he was a grown man. We just ask that everyone would just come out and support us, because if we don't do nothing, nobody else will. And we need to stick together and protect our children. Brian needs to go to prison. I'm going to be honest, that's where I want him to be. I don't, I just don't feel that, I feel that they're slapping him on his hand with a misdemeanor. You pushed down an underage child, you need to go to prison, you need to be held accountable for your actions. You need, you need to see what it feels like, because my sister is sitting here suffering now, she's hurt, you know. And my grandson, he don't even understand what's going on. Why would the principal do that to him? He's supposed to feel safe, these kids are supposed to feel safe when they're at school. And at this point right now, it's like kind of hard to believe. And as a Fresno, they need to get on their job. Because you guys did this one time, and now it's like, like it's being said, it's being brushed under the carpet. But also, the Fresno Police Department needs to be held accountable also for holding his case for two months. That's just ridiculous.
My name is Clarice Jones, and I'm here on behalf of the victim. I have a son, it's just like, look at them, ADHD autistic too. And what I seen in the video, you know, it made my mom cry, made me angry. Because I don't feel that any kid, whether he has a disability or not, should be treated the way that the victim was treated, you know. I feel like he should be charged with a felony, and I feel like the Fresno Unified, they gave him a chance to resign so he could go get another job. And I feel like they're charging him with a misdemeanor so he can go apply for another job. I feel like he should be charged with a felony, because from what I seen and everybody else seen, it was a felony assault to me, not misdemeanor about it. And the way that he stood over him, you know, and tried to chastise him, like he did something wrong when it was him. That's all I have to say.
So, one of the things that we have to understand, in the context of the United States of America, that there was a time where white folk did not want blacks, us as Africans, in their school system. And I'll give us a historical context, because I think it's important to understand that we still are dealing with systemic institutionalized racism that is still embedded in the fiber of America here today. We have a white man, credentialed white man, who decided that he had the privilege to assault one of our babies. And I think it's important that we understand that that's wrong. I mean, I, as a civil rights leader, I look at, you know, a lot of things that has taken place when it comes to injustice across this country. And it's just really, really ridiculous that we are still dealing with stuff, things that Dr. King dealt with back in the 1960s. And no child, black, white, yellow, blue, green, pink, all the colors in the crayon book do not deserve what happened to this young man. And for the system that we have in place today, that has not held him accountable, from Sacramento, California, the capital, all the way here to Fresno Unified, which is Fresno County Board of Education, Fresno Unified, I guess Fresno Unified said, "When we did our job, we, you know, we were going to fire him, he resigned, so we have nothing else to deal with." No, this goes beyond this now. We have to deal with policy now. And that's the angle that, part of the angle we're going at this end, is to change policy. So that means we have to meet with our elected representatives to let them know that we want a bill or policy made so that if a rogue teacher put their nasty, filthy paws on our children unjustly, we want them arrested with a felony and to go to jail. Because if it was reversed around, and our child would have hit a principal, trust me, you would have expelled him, you would have kicked him out of school, and he couldn't go to school nowhere in the state of California. Let's say he brought a gun to school. You hold them accountable, but you don't hold the teachers accountable. And you think that we're going to sit here, because you've scared a lot of other black folk in this community here, that you think we're going to be silent? It's not going to roll like that. So we making it clear now. All you politicians that's here in Fresno County, expect a knock on the door and to speak to me and this family, because we want policy made in Sacramento, that we want his credentials taken away. Because he needs anger management. That's all it was. He needs anger management. He needs some therapy. Mr. Brian Boheart needs some therapy. He needs anger management classes. But you strip his credentials while you're doing it. Because if it was a black man that took a kid in Columbus Unified and pushed him across the room, a black man, trust me, that black man would have been arrested, handcuffed, and prosecuted by now. But two months, two months, it sat on the police desk, and nothing was done. And then you run around and got nerves every year to march in the streets of Fresno talking about, "We still overcome," talking about, "Dr. King, I had a dream." That's silliness. And you all know it, the phoniness of this community. Black people are waking up now. I've been praying many nights that they wake up, they're waking up now. You seeing how they doing gentrification, you seeing how they taking our homes that our grandpas, grandmothers worked hard for? But you think we're going to pay to send our children to your school so you can assault them? And you're going to go work for another school district? Why don't you resign at Tranquility now? See, we're not your guinea pigs. We're not your guinea pigs, nor you're going to treat us like that. We are told this family here in Free AMI, we love them, they welcome to come and worship with us. We're going to embrace them, we're going to be in the court Monday, the 26th? The 26th at 8:30? And Department 12, we're going to pray before we go in there? Or we're going to keep this issue at the forefront? You know, Channel 47, 26, Fresno Beat, whoever, 24, y'all don't want to run the story? We run our own story. Because we putting this on notice across the world now. Mr. Brian Boheart, my brother. I'm going to ask you to resign at Tranquility. Because you resigned at Fresno Unified. I'm asking you humbly, that you turn in your credentials. Don't embarrass yourself to have us go to Sacramento, but we will. Don't waste our time. But if you're ready for a fight, you got it. You got the right one, as Dr. Harris here. And I advise you not to put your nasty paws on no kid in Tranquility School District. We want to thank everyone for this family here, that they stay strong, the young man stays strong. We going to pray before we dismiss, because this is a spiritual warfare that we're dealing with here. I understand spirits, I understand people and their behavior. Shall we pray? Father God, we just thank you at this time, God, we thank you for this family. We thank you for all of those who are here, who spoke. God, I ask that you give us special blessing upon them, God. God, we ask right now, God, that you touch our little brother, who has been harmed, who has been violated, trust is gone, who's been attacked, who's been assaulted. And just much as it was done to him has been done to this family and to the black community. We ask for solidarity that those will come on Monday, at the courthouse, at 8:30, to be with us as we go in and hold accountability at the highest of high. We go in with no fear, but we go in there with justice. Father, we thank you. Give me the strength to keep leading, not to bow down, but to stand with this family. And to teach the young men, and the young men in our community, that they are somebody. No matter what health issues, circumstances they go through, they are somebody, need to be treated with dignity and respect, just like any other kid should be in this district, this country. We thank you. We thank you, we love you. See, this thing we pray, amen.